Good evening, and welcome to Village Hall. This evening we have a public hearing, then followed by agenda, followed by board reports, then comments, questions, and concerns by the resident voters. So I'll start with the public hearing for 15 of the voters. Ms. Walsh, would you please note something?
Thank you, ma'am and Sheriff. Legal notice of side plane review, public hearing. Incorporated Village of Four O'Clock New York. Notice here that the Board of Justices in the Incorporated Village of Four O'Clock New York will hold a public hearing at Village Hall on 4th O'Clock, Four O'Clock New York, and on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, at 8:00 p.m. in connection to the following application. The application of John R. Sorente, J.R.S., architect, for side plane review for the minor subdivision application for the property located at 15th Avenue, Four O'Clock New York, on the Abraham Lesser, the Villain Associates, L.L.A. City. This application is made in accordance with Article 3, Section 99, Division 54, F1 and G, of the zoning ordinance of the Incorporated Village of Four O'Clock New York, which requires that a minor commercial subdivision of material units only may be authorized only after a public hearing. The structure for which said application is situated on the east side of the Avenue, 100 feet south of 2A, and known in Section 32, what, 1.1, lots 18, 29, 30, 17, 23, 25, 11, 20, 126, and 226, on the National County Land and Tax Act. A copy of the application is on file in the office of the Village Clerk, on 4th O'Clock, Four O'Clock New York, and may be sent by any person who is interested there in their business hours Monday through Friday, inclusive except the legal holidays from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Now, take notice that all parties interested, citizens, will be given the opportunity to be heard at the enforcement time of place by the Board of Justices, Incorporated Village of Four O'Clock, Susan Amico, Village Clerk, in this day and October 22nd, 2021, and that this legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Four O'Clock New York, and posted for it to law, and was sent to the National County Planning Commission and pursuant to Section 239, Act of Alan, of the General News of the Board, determined to depart to the village to take action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you very much. I'd like to place on the record, the application had previously filed an affidavit of service and became the law neighbor within a 300-foot radius of the dwelling, but it served as notice. I'd also like to announce that the Board has previously adopted a resolution determining that the application would not have a significant impact on the environment as defined by the statute. I assume, you know, we're going to review the application. Yes. Yeah, you come up to the podium, and there's one about the stenographer, and then you can give us an overview of what the questions and welcome.
You swear or from testimony about to give me the truth, Paul, truth, and not a lie?
Aye.
Name and address?
Kevin from Doorville, J.R.S., architect, 2A1 East Chartered, 101.
And you're representing?
John R. Sorente, he is the architect of record at Doorville. Our client, Abraham Lesser, wishes to, wishes to minor subdivide the building into six proposed units. This would be office condos. This will have no effect on square footage, occupancy, or structural tendencies. Other than that, I know you do not have a copy of the proposed deeds. I do have them in right now, and the existing deed, I have the lead as well. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Okay. You'll read the deed into the board?
Yes.
Well, I have one question. You said office condos.
Yes.
Are you describing office condos?
Mainly exactly what they are existing today. Businesses are thinking of, what do you call, I'm sorry. You know, the trade of office work as in businesses group B, which is the zone form right now. Currently, right there is a dentist office, and a couple of their office buildings.
So what's the difference between what's there today and what's being asked for?
What's there today is everything is leased out. He would like to subdivide into minor subdivisions for separate tax lots.
Okay. I'll have some, well, if no trustee change, you have any question?
So I have not, has the declaration of condominium been filed?
No, it hasn't.
How are you allocating parking lot?
The parking lot is allocated as far here, first space per unit, this is to zone code.
So when I look at one of these kinds of deeds, is unit, first unit two described as that office?
Yes.
Plus X number of spots. That is very delineated as which number of spots?
Yes, to square footage.
So each condo comes with a specific parking lot?
Parking lot, that is existing, the spots are existing on the side.
A document you're holding, not putting in?
This is a diagram of the parking lot.
And does that tie into the deed in any way?
I believe so. I'm sorry, the attorney wrote the deed just this morning, on just the architect of.
Okay. I didn't know that. I don't understand. Doesn't say those spaces are per, to go in?
Yes, so unit 1, 2, 3, 4, 6.
On my page?
Yes.
Do we get a copy?
Yes, of course.
So my, again, my question was, in the declaration of condominium, is it defined as with two, is unit two defined as specific unit plus lot numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I don't know, or whatever the exact hours are.
For the parking lot or parking spaces or?
You convey the unit?
Yes.
The definition of the unit includes the office space unit number?
Mm-hmm.
And then, does it say, together with parking lot 1 through 6, or 7 through 10, or 1 through 5, I don't know if it says.
Yes, I believe that. Sorry, I believe so.
So we don't have, the declaration has not been filed yet, correct?
No, haven't, for the calendar scale.
We don't know, we don't know that until that is filed and approved.
Of course.
You mentioned you have several leases in effect from the present time?
Yes.
So what's the last expiration date with options to renew? When do they expire? And when can we expect the last that they, somebody who owns their unit number pursuant to the lease, when could the last one be sold?
I believe the last one is 2025. I know the existing leases were submitted in the previous architectural board's application.
I know the lease expires, I didn't see the whole lease. Are there any options to renew on that lease?
I deny that.
I'm sorry, the gentleman in the back, do you call the application?
Yes.
He wants to know if it gets sworn in, if he could maybe help answer the question?
Yes.
Good evening.
You swear or from testimony about to give me the truth, Paul, truth, and not a lie?
Yes, I have sworn.
Name and address?
My name is Ben Zion, B-E-N-I-A-K-E-R.
What's your, spell your license for me?
B-E-N-I-A-K-E-R.
And your address?
1481 Forty-seventh Street, Brooklyn, New York, 1121.
Thank you.
Good evening, Paul.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you, everybody.
Now, what's your relation to the application?
I manage the property, I refer to the Village Associates.
Okay.
Basically, what we're doing is, one of the current tenants in the building, who we pulled the building from, occupies part of the building, and he wants to buy back his portion that he occupies. The transaction was approved as a condo already by the Attorney General of the State of New York, and just, we have to go through now to finalize the village, they should go through their part, we should be able to finalize this transaction.
Did you not already leave answers to trustee change's question, if we lost a deed in the parking?
Yes, each deed, each parcel is recognized, the parking is, if parking's area A matches deed A, parking area B matches deed B, so on and so forth.
Are all the parking spaces in that lot allocated to units?
Yes.
Every corner?
No.
Front door?
No.
It's coming on behind it?
No, I'm sorry, there are a few that, I don't have the exact account, but there are a few that are allocated for visitors.
So tenants would be behind the gate, is that the same? There's a swinging gate there?
Correct.
Any access?
The parts in the front of the gate, that's going to, we signed, we signed the lease with tenant, that in front, that's, I believe is allocated to that.
So not all the units being sold in the building?
Correct.
One is leased out to this, this?
We're only, we're splitting off, I believe it's, second floor, I believe it's one unit, yes.
Unit four.
Unit four, I guess? The second floor is being sold.
Present time, is also a gymnasium in the basement?
Yes.
And is that being sold?
No.
So that's going to be retained as a gymnasium?
Correct.
Used for use by?
Tenants of the building.
And I remember seeing in one of the leases, something about a community kitchen on some, on some floors?
That's on the second floor.
Is that also being retained or?
That's being used only for the second floor, that's part of the sale. As of now, it's only, also only being used for the second floor.
Who is, which, so is there a unit that has control over that kitchen?
The tenant who was purchasing it, he controls it.
So the declaration of condominium is a, not, this is unit one, I was making this up now. It includes that square footage, that they convert that out of the kitchen?
That's part of the sale.
Same, so they, so they have the right to convert that out of a kitchen into something else?
In the future?
They are?
They are, they, yes, I mean, we're not restricting them of keeping it as a kitchen.
I don't know what you're doing, that's why I'm asking you questions.
Sorry?
I don't know what you're doing, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, they, I mean, if they want to change it, two years from today, I believe they can.
I noticed on the condo deed also, there's no percentage of common areas. Normally, normally a condo deed would say together with X percentage of the common area.
You have the common area.
I'm, yeah, the deed, I'm only hoping it was the deeds.
You're like, oh, by the way, it's state common area, where's your plan?
Well, I'm just kidding, you said the deed was just done, I guess.
Did your deed was just done in 12 months?
Yeah, I don't want to go back to the real property model, but I've had a separation of common area, so on the deed, you put this down?
Of course. The common area has to be listed on the deed?
Typically, yes. Typically, yes. Mr. Ryan, you agree?
Yeah.
And thank you. You said the, you said the owner, you mentioned something about the owner that names her, but who was, who did, who did the Village Associates acquire the property from?
From the company we're selling it to.
So why do I have a copy of the town and himster IDA in here, trust me?
Oh, because that was part of the pilot program, or the pilot program is, is a deed, it's deeded to the pilot program.
It wasn't originally, it wasn't under 9885.
Okay, that's when it was originally developed, from, it's similar to yours. Yeah, that's the only deed that I saw that's.
By the way, trustee check, the deeds do contain a percentage of the common area as such terms defined in the declaration, these deeds have a percentage.
I'm sorry, my copy does not have the, mine is, I have a power attorney twice, I don't have the, I'll just give the deed here. I'm probably. It says power attorney, I power it, I'm looking at the cover section, yeah, deed, attorney paid, there's nothing else on it. It wasn't totally in power.
Yeah, power.
You're going to have to go to the county to do an enforcement and get separate tax lots assigned to these units as well, right?
Yes. So, sorry, any reason why the declaration hasn't been filed yet?
Or you're waiting for us?
Declaration, which I, the declaration. I believe, I believe we're, this should be, yes.
Thank you, WMA. Trustee Chair. Hi, um, it's my thing, Steve, I've got to ask you this. Is there, anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the best application here at Village Hall? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
Isn't anyone on Zoom?
There is.
There is.
Um, good.
Can you tell us, do you have potential occupants of this condo, or potential owners of these condo offices who have expressed interest?
Currently, currently, the building is, the lease that we signed, that the state owned the old chase space, the building is occupied. Unfortunately, we lost one of the tenants in the building a few months ago, but there are a few of the leases that have option to purchase their space, yes. And let everybody know, we have a great time on the first floor, and we'll be trying to keep it.
Okay, any further questions, by the way? If I could ask for motion to reserve decision and close the closing.
Before you, you told me before that, I'm sorry, five hours, on the parking diagram, I'm just looking at, now, just received a copy of, that front area of the parking lot, if I'm not mistaken, is showing, where it says bank parking, which is the front park, which you said is going to be a visitor, it says unit three.
Sorry, maybe I didn't express myself correctly.
Maybe I need to hear it, sorry.
The front part, that's going, that's going to be for the, for the deck unit, for the old chase space.
So where are the visitors parking?
Visitors parking, you must, one second.
So unit three is the old chase bank?
Yes. Yes. If you look on the, on the parking diagram, there are two vacant, empty ones with that numbers.
It's behind, that's behind the swinging of the?
Correct. Those, it's exactly, the layout, how we do the condo, is exactly how it's now, as it's rent, everybody rents their own, and basically, stay the same thing. So everybody keeps their parking as we have it now, those two empty spots, those two are the visitor spots.
So presumably, then, only unit three, I'm sorry, no, I'm not following that, I apologize, I'm not trying to be dense with this. Where are the visitors parking?
Visitors, the two empty ones with that numbers.
So of all this square footage, you have two, two spots, correct?
So there's the gas system.
Can I phrase that a little bit? If you're unit two, and you have visitors, they could park in unit two spaces?
Definitely, yes.
So if I have a business, then I would need three employees, the rest, I'm unit two, the rest could be used for?
Correct.
But if I have a dental office, so I have a dentist, several hygienists, a next great person, and I have patients, and office staff, and building and model of blood, I might need more.
The tenant signed the lease, and knowing this is their parking spots, and I believe they know it's sufficient for them.
See, I, I apologize, but I haven't read the lease of the, that this part, all I have is a couple pages, and it's my report, I don't know the layout of the parking, so they're going to have to remember. We have those, the rest of the leases?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, you will get down with me. Any other questions? Would you like to ask for a motion to reserve decision and close?
Moved.
Ms. Walsh, can you pull more?
Trustee Cabana, aye. Trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart? Aye. And ma'am and Sheriff?
Aye. So will the other president?
Thank you.
You want to stick around for a second, again, if you want to move the case?
Thank you.
I think I got something to say there, these people just stick around.
I would ask the board to approve the minutes of the public hearing, we're rolling on the 6th of 2021, in a regular meeting of the Board of Justices, both held on October 19th, 2021. Second.
Any discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts payable as follows. General fund, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Full fund, two thousand one hundred and two dollars. Capital fund, twenty-two thousand five hundred eighteen dollars, requiring total of nine hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
I'll hold for that resolution. I'll second.
Trustee Cabana, aye. Trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve and reiterate on use of public facilities as presented. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, hold more.
That's okay.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
I would ask the board to authorize the payment of earned approvals in accordance with CSDA contract for maculants as of October 30th, 2021, as presented. How was that? Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, hold more.
Trustee Cabana, trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the request of Susan Amico in an amount of sixty-five dollars for an extra charter agreement she is unable to attend. All of my resolutions?
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, hold more.
Trustee Cabana?
Aye.
Trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve and reiterate the agreement to Village and National Grid, wherein the village will receive twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars and forty-nine cents for the roadway restoration of roads such as Bryant Avenue, Fourthon Avenue, North of Portia, and South of Portia, due to the 2021 gas replacement project by National Grid.
I'll hold for that resolution. I'll hold second. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank, again, Village Administrator Manbrook and Superintendent Dean for coming up with the idea that makes best use of that fund to do a whole street as opposed to just letting utility pay half the street. Ms. Walsh, hold more.
Trustee Cabana, aye. Trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
I would ask the board to hire Paul Dankola as a laborer in the public works department at contractual rate of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and six dollars annually, subject to medical, drug, and alcohol clearances, and National County Civil Service Commission approval.
I'll hold for that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Cabana?
Aye.
Trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
And trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am and Sheriff?
Aye.
I would ask the board to award the electrical distribution upgrades of field lighting to house electrical contractors for the basin amounts of seventy-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars, and to authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign contracts. How was the decision? Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, hold more.
Trustee Cabana? Trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am and Sheriff?
Aye.
And finally, ask the board to approve the proposal, D of the architects, for the revision of the construction documents in the bidding process of the recharge basin and drain assistant project in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars, and authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign certificates. How was the presentation?
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, hold more.
Trustee Cabana? Trustee Chang?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am and Sheriff?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Now, I'll go to board reports, and first, the deputy mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First rule for our recreation department. As our full sports look to be ends of their seasons and remaining Eagles role hockey is underway until winter, our players and coaches have run into some challenging weather and field conditions. The intensity of recent rainstorms often leaves our role fields in open spring, waterlogged and pool playing conditions. To the rescue have come recreation supervisor Kurt Mayford and the parks department staff to clear out puddles, dry out surfaces, and restore facilities to pool playing condition. Our baseball, football, and hockey teams have expressed their appreciation, thanks for our support. The Department of Public Works, for those of you who entered Village Hall this evening, you've noticed new bright white doors at the board entrance on the right side of the building, with the added decorative transom above doors. This is by Henderson Village Hall in Hanson. Thanks to DPW Superintendent Kevin Nagy, and Agent Supervisor Kevin Pierceall, and Village Superintendent Mary Marcus, for this collaboration, we plan to let in doors, transom, and insulation. As Superintendent said, as Superintendent Nagy said, great jobs and a great team. We agree. Roadway Marshall for the rear drive section of the village in St. Press, the AK curb ramps and repave in have just about been completed on portions of Marshall and Warkit, as well as permanent bills of rear drive east and rear port. This was a joint project, as we mentioned before, as we moved on different streets in our early resolution, with National Grid who compensated the village for repaving with a portion of roadways damaged by recent gas line construction work, which was then combined with state chip funds to complete the entire repaving of these streets. The LED lighting installation program is continual in the West End and the Robinson Adelaide area this week. Remain will be the West End of the West End, and the floor parkway side of Centennial Gardens to be completed by the end of November, with fifty damage waiting to go through the road with lights. In follow-up from the warm-up to the weather, the leaves are quickly changing colors and dropping. DPW's curb side leaf correction has begun. Please do not break the leaves into the street, since it's going to be dangerous for children playing with leaves, and the heat, of course, that we parked on top of them, may start fires, help us keep Four O'Clock safe. For the Conservation Society, thanks go to the Conservation Society volunteers, volunteer extraordinary Hannah Moynah and Dominic McCarty, talented designer, creator, and builder of Fairy Villages, including those featured in our own Fairy Forest Festival on October 23rd. In addition to all the gardens volunteers, fifty additional volunteers, mostly high school students, gave their fairy costumes and wings to greet children and tell fairy stories. And in all, five hundred and seventy-five children and their families spent the afternoon enjoying the magic of the festival. Another great day to be a child in Four O'Clock. See the Four O'Clock Centennial Gardens Facebook page for the fun and cool highlights. As daylight saving time comes to an end this Sunday, November 7th, the gardens hours will change to 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. this Sunday. Then, on Sunday, November 28th, the gardens will close for the year at 4:00 p.m. We invite all to join, enjoy the gardens while we can. For our chambers of commerce and our businesses, the latest progress with the fire damage recovery of new properties includes the construction of a new secure fence around the property, the fence is anchored, surrounding the property with seven-feeder separation between the damaged structures and fencing. This seven-feeder separation allows for greater safety and access to the damaged structures, the village staff, and construction workers. The sidewalk on Coquelin is now open for pedestrians, and the parking meter is off the operation. The village quarter is now involved with this demolition project, and our next goals are to demolish the remaining damaged structures. Superintendent Mary Marcus continues to work with the property owners and contractors to move on to the next steps required for reconstruction. And I noted that she continues to work aggressively with the property owners and contractors to move this along. On Saturday, excuse me, on Friday, October 29th, I was delighted to join the Four O' O'Clock Chamber of Commerce at the National County Council of Chambers Businessperson of the New York. This year, the world baller, Mr. Cristo, Assilio, owner of garden. This year, the world was Christo Asilio, owner of our very extraordinary Floral Park diner. Others included, uh, Kenny Marcus, husband of building superintendent Ray Rene Marcus, who is a city builder, as he is Fountaindale's Businessperson of the Year as the insurance company owner in the village of Hollywood. The theme of this year's event was employed with disabled, and featured informative, inspiring remarks by John Lee Cronin, a young man with down stridor with his father, Mark, created and operated John's Crazy Sox, which are really spectacular. Congratulations to Chris, Ken, and Paul. Uh, save the dates. The plan is in the works for the Floral Park Chamber of Commerce and Tree Republicans Club tree lighting and holiday festival on Friday evening, December 3rd, and the Cobra Avenue Chamber of Commerce Stuart Manor tree lighting on Saturday, December 11th, with details to follow. Uh, Fish. Friends in Safe Hands, or Fish, is a fifty-year-old floral park treasure. Today, President Frank Ciara, village clerk, Susan Walsh, and I have the pleasure of joining members of Fish to celebrate the fifty years of service to those in need in floral park. Fish is a large group of very dedicated volunteers who drive those residents to local tournaments, to Green Market, and offer other unique opportunities. Those who need may Google Flower Park Fish for contact information, which Fish car services may be helpful, or to voluntarily drive others. Fish is a member of the Floral Park Chamber of Commerce and is listed on their online directory, as well as on the village website, that's the people which live rural, under cultural, environmental, and service organizations. You can also call Village Hall if you're interested in Fish service, or if you have trouble with some of the website, uh, connections that you need to make. Finally, happy fifth anniversary to Fish. We thank you for your extraordinary service to the village. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot going on, a lot of good things, and none of that happens without the great volunteers that, uh, the back home, it's really make a lot of special things happen. Trustee Chang.
I'd say the third track, 3TC, for the past few months has been accessing right away from Main Street. We have reached an agreement with 3TC where they will be responsible for the repair of damage to Main Street. Unfortunately, we still do not have a start date for the sound of retaining all construction along Charles. To the Fire Department, this Sunday, the Floral Park Fire Department Rescue Company will be honoring ex-Chief Rick Michael and my boss, people for fifty years of volunteer service. I had the pleasure of being a line officer during the eighties and early nineties, when, through their leadership and, and Chief Prior, we were able to purchase our first box ambulance, not a single little van. And the old rescue truck that was designed during their tenure is still in service. Mike, Mike on the body is in the audience. Do you know how old, what the year of that old rescue truck is?
It's, uh, seventy-eight, I think it is.
I think it was after, but you may be right. That, that vehicle's still in service. We congratulate them for taking this milestone, and our forever grateful dedication, commitment, and service to the park and our communities. Also, the month of October, rescuing seventy-five, rest of the department thirty-two.
Thank you. So two gentlemen celebrating fifty years of volunteer service, who just had a fish, who's celebrating fifty years. Trustee Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, please, on Saturday, October 23rd, our Floral Park Police Department, with the assistance of the Laman Harrier Crew, and Lynn Smith and Terry Whelan from Alliance Club, participated in the DPA's National Drug Take Back Day. Nationwide, nearly seven hundred and forty, forty-five thousand pounds of unneeded medications were received. At our Floral Park Police Department, Floral Park residents turned in nearly ninety pounds of unneeded medications. During the event, our residents, our residents expressed appreciation for the ability to rid themselves of these medications. Thank you to our police department, the crew committee, and Alliance Club for their service to our community. The National Drug Take Back Day occurs twice a year. As a reminder, there are receptacles in the lobby of our Floral Park Police Department, where at any time, a resident can drop off any unneeded medications or needles. Also from the police department, last Saturday, our police department held a Halloween event for our children. Over fifty children showed up, many dressed in police officer costumes, and received Halloween treats from our police department. This year, there were two special guests at the event. Nassau County Mounted Officers with their horses. Tank, being ridden by police officer Patrick Shields, and J Q, ridden by police officer Steve Toronetta, were on duty in the street outside Floral Park Police Station. All who stopped by were able to pet and take pictures with the horses. Police officer Shields and Toronetta mounted on their horses, talked with all the children, answering questions, and tell them about their experience of being on mounted police officer. Tank and J Q seemed to enjoy the children as much as the children enjoyed them. It was a lot of fun. Thanks to Lieutenant Paul Doherty and Matt DeGusi putting this event together. And a special thanks goes to Nassau County Police Department Mounted Unit, especially the police officers Shields and police officer Toronetta, who spent the day in our village. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Chair. Trustee Stewart.
Hi, thanks for coming. As a former Fish volunteer, I would like to wish them a very happy fiftieth birthday, and thank the long-term volunteers for their continued service to our residents, some of whom are our most needy residents, who otherwise might not get their doctor's visits and unnecessary medications. So it's a very big milestone, and we're grateful for their service. Uh, also on Saturday, the twentieth, the Knights of Columbus, who is almost, we'll be celebrating our hundredth anniversary this summer, uh, held, held their annual Radivans Run, sporting a field of runners of variabilities. Congratulations to fifteen-year-old Village of Flower Park resident Kevin Adam, who came in first place, nearly two full minutes ahead of the second place finisher. It was a great event hosted at the Knights Council here in the village. Uh, I was also, I also got to meet Tank and J Q and the officers from the Mounted Unit. We brought a very special friend and more families with us, and he was really just enthralled, all the pride of the horses. Uh, as far as the pool goes, we have put out a bid, uh, request for a maintenance contract. This contract will allow us to have one place to go to for our pool maintenance and repair needs. I really think this is going to benefit the village and the pool membership greatly. And also, please, start to think about summer employment at the pool, and the right center for your teens. Late bird classes are being given throughout the late fall and, and winter at the Freeport Recreation Center. You can visit their website for class times and prices. Uh, we also look for office maintenance, office staff and maintenance staff, uh, for the pool over the summer. The library continues to be one of the busiest places in the village. November is Food for Fines Month at our library. So if you have an outstanding find, if you bring a can of vegetables, we will wipe this slate clean for you. The food donations are greatly accepted in lieu of your finds. All items collected will be donated to the Harley Division Food Pantry. You are welcome to donate, even if you are not careers. You can learn how to play the ukulele in only one class at the library coming up. No experience necessary. Check the, the website or the Facebook page for all of those details. We also have a join our sidewalk astronomer, Tom Lynch, for our Night of the Stars. Uh, registration is required. This is obviously weather permitting, Tuesday, November 16th at seven o'clock. There is also registration open for an afternoon with Chek Rob, an in-person event at the Floral Park Library. If you have Thanksgiving leftovers, Chek Rob will show you how to turn them into turkey bolognese. Uh, one noticeable upgrade for some of our flor, for some of our library patrons is the phone system has finally been upgraded, so you should no longer experience, uh, busy signals or out of service issues at the library. So thanks to Darwin Lindsen for helping to oversee this project.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. I guess Davey should have tipped them through the tools.
I have no idea. I thought it would be a bad start.
There was so many holes.
One night...
You haven't been over yet.
No. Um, I have just two things. Belmont is a little over two weeks away from opening. Um, Jerry Danberg and myself are working hard to ensure that we get some sort of buffer at the dead end of the progress, paid a bill for the AFA, uh, to administer damage, put a lot of time for this, a little less than two weeks, uh, to, uh, ensure that the various agencies that are involved in this project hear the voices of the residents that are... More to follow, hopefully, in the news. Also, the tree committee met earlier this week. Uh, we will be planting in the next couple of weeks approximately a hundred and fifty trees. Uh, we still have room. If anybody would like a tree, please call DPW. And also, there will be a letter given to the residents who are getting a tree, uh, on how to care for the tree, especially in the first couple of weeks. That's all I had. If I could ask for a motion to close the meeting, involve the...
So moved.
Thank you. For the favor? Aye. Thank you. So now, open it up for any residents here, if we all have questions, comments. Leave it, Mr. Mayor.
Happy evening, everyone. It's you, man. Just a question, two things. First question is the Trustee Chair, the Police Department. So that, I went to check with Dr. Rocco, the receptionist, and I was turned away at that point, so...
We're working on it. It's a rotation that comes to your account, which we're working on.
Oh, okay. Just because they had no idea. Has it been like that forever? No CBS around here takes anything, so unfortunately, I didn't know about the upcoming event, so...
We're working on it.
Okay, in the future. Uh, second, whether I was here in September regarding parking, if this is coming for an update or offering any other assistance, uh, I sent over the documents to Ms. Walsh. Is there anything else I can do to help, or write me letters, or find out, I know you're back, you're super, super busy now, maybe, uh, next year or something, are there plans to make?
So we did a little research, and, um, I don't know, turn the device to be sure. In order to issue passes, you know, for parking, it would absolutely require state legislation. I think I mentioned to you the last time that Assemblywoman Solage had approached us about potentially some blocks within the village due to the arena opening up. Uh, she said, be ready with, um, some blocks. The legislation never got through in the last session.
Okay.
Um, you know, I guess, if, when the arena opens and it's, we're gonna have to press her on it. Um, you know, it's kind of a waiting scene. I mean, I have some idea what may happen. Hopefully it doesn't, um, but we may have to go back to her, sort of, if it becomes bad. You know, we'll think about, uh, the clean also. But it could only, can't alarm the other, you know, residents, you know, residents, residents of streets that are flood, uh, commercial districts.
Okay, um, sorry, just ability, or, or, you know, I park village, I give up.
Yeah.
That didn't fly, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Grant, what was the argument?
There's a government rise in New York State Highway law, and that area, the way park, had that park district long before that law went into effect, so it... Gotcha. Grandfather. Right. So now we're subject to the whims of state legislation, which may be... We love it. Okay, I understand. So, again, I know, so if you put it in for the next one, I understand.
I trust the other lady came with, with, uh, the service of the enforcement of that.
Yes, well, yes, every, well, we're still not parking in cars. Uh, we're kind of low with parking at the moment, kind of, kind of Steven, or whatever, so things have been quiet all around for a minute. We haven't moved in a car, but they haven't, at this, past, because it's kind of, kind of been overwhelming with parking either, so, at this point.
You said it's seasonal, I was curious why, what makes it season?
I don't know. It's like, now, it's like, it's, it's fairly quiet in the lot. There's not a lot of cars there. It's time, right? Two days later, maybe, Thursday, Friday, you know, it's Thursday, Friday, but sometimes, like, this novelty thing, you can load it in our basement. I don't know if it's like, they park in Stuart Manor, Stuart Manor crashed down on the outside, you crack that on the back. I don't know if it's something like that, or it's just, uh, goes with a bit of the trend going on. It's basically quiet in the avenues, as far as we can see right now. Probably when the holidays start, you know, it can get crazy in the weekend. Corporate, my chance. But for right now, we think it's still a great, as I said, we're moving in the car, and we haven't had any, uh, any issues where we're just getting the car out, fighting over minutes and stuff like that, so it's not going to get any better, but thank you.
Thank you for your efforts also on the block towards, um, come up, um, your own solutions, which seem to be working for now. It's still high on our radar. We'll continue to look around and look at other municipalities, we'll hear about parking studies or, or parking plans that they're doing, and see what they're doing. Um, that may give us either ideas or, um, ways to make something like residential parking, um, it's... How do we get, how do we get approval, because it's important.
Great, thank you. And then, as I said, latching on to these other issues, it's also a good way to, to, to park. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anyone else here at Village Hall? Question, comment? Anyone on Zoom? Have a question, comment? I know a few of them.
Nope.
Thank you very much for coming. Uh, see you in two weeks, probably. Oh, Bill, say it.
No, you're welcome.